Call to order the meeting for Tuesday, December 15th, 2015, for the Iredle County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow your head for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. If we could please stand, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are no adjustments coming from the staff.
contract modification that will be discussed after the closed session for attorney-client issues. So at this point, we will move to a presentation of special recognitions and awards. You know, this year is the first year that more millennial generation is in the workforce than there are baby boomers. Because baby boomers, like most of the folks up on this dais, are beginning to retire having run the race. And so there comes a time when you pass the baton to the young bucks and buckets. And tonight, we have the privilege of being able to recognize four longtime employees and leaders of Iredle County. And so we will be recognizing the retirement of David Martin, who is the Director of our Emergency Communications and Emergency Management Department. We will also be recognizing the retirement of John Williams, who is our Director of Vehicle Services. Likewise, out of Vehicle Services, the retirement of Dennis Stewart, who is a mechanic, and the recognition as well as of Reethia Morrison, who is retiring from the Iredle County Public Library. If you'll bear with us, we will be introducing each of these individuals, and we have some remarks that will be made by, in some cases, their supervisors and a Commissioner. And so, without further ado, I'll come around to the front.
David, it's a real privilege for me to be able to be a part of this ceremony of recognizing, officially on behalf of the County Commission, your years of service. And your years of service in communications for our county have spanned 32 years of full-time service, and I know you have a couple of additional years of part-time service when you got your foot in the door. I'll let Steve Johnson, who has been working with you many years, wax eloquent about good stories about your leadership. But I will just tell you, from my personal opportunity to be able to work with you during the last year, the things that our emergency services and emergency communicators, and indeed, all of our emergency services and first responders do, you don't really notice what they're doing until you need their services. You don't realize the amount of planning and rehearsals and coordinating that goes into trying to anticipate the emergency situations that any community may be potentially exposed to, from winter storms to hurricanes to floods to even the most extreme kind of event at Maguire Nuclear Station. And in his capacity as the Director of Emergency Management, I was able to see firsthand what an incredible job of leadership and coordinating that David brings to the table in pulling together multiple agencies, all with different pieces of the pie. But you've got to have a cook that puts it all together, and that's what David has done. Now, of course, David couldn't have been putting in all these 34 years of service without the support of his family. You know, we could say that, you know, the strength of our county is our employees, but the strength of our employees is their family. Because you can't count the number of times that the tone has gone off in the middle of Thanksgiving dinner, or Sunday lunch, or whatever important family activity is going on, and you've got to get up, or at 3:00 in the morning, you've got to get up out of the bed and head out. So, thank you from me personally and the rest of the board. And I would like to turn things over to Commissioner Johnson, who, based on his 18 years of service to the county, or starting 18 years, can be able to recount, I think, a few specific instances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, I want to stand before you tonight in front of these people and thank you from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the citizens of this county, for the service you've rendered. You know, there's no substitute for a faithful watchman. I had the opportunity this past year to read Adrian Coatsworth, his newest book on the Punic Wars, and what Scipio Africanus realized he could defeat the Carthaginians by bribing their watchmen on the wall. What Hazdrupal came back to Hannibal and said, "We can't break into their walls because their watchmen are faithful." There's no substitute for a faithful watchman. And all these years, David, we don't put men on the wall anymore. We put men and women in front of a monitor, but they're always faithful, the watchers. And he said, "They may summon the sword, and they summon the worst. Always faithful should bad become worse." And you've always been faithful, David, and it's been a pleasure to work for all these years. I, as so many other people, could stand up here tonight and just tell these folks how much respect we have for you, for your integrity, your faithfulness, your honesty, and all the times that we've had together on various communications committees, talking with one another, and you were always honest about what your needs were. And I could tell you were always sincere, and you were motivated to get the best deal for the taxpayers you could, and perform the function, and you were always willing to be held accountable. And one observation I've made in all these years is the good people enjoy being held accountable, because when the lights come up, they shine. And we never had to worry about you, David. You were always faithful. You operated to the highest set of standards, and folks don't realize that that sheriff's deputy doesn't show up, or the fire truck, or the ambulance doesn't show up unless it first comes through you. And you've always been there, and you've always provided that service. And I, and we all stand here and accomplish what we accomplish because we stand on the shoulders of those who go before us. I only hope that when I leave here, my foundation will be as firm as yours. Thank you. Congratulations. You've got a lot to put up with, man. Thank you for putting up with him. I know he got called out all hours of the night, and when we were celebrating Thanksgiving or Christmas, sometime, he wasn't there. And that's a sacrifice, and we thank you for that.
I just appreciate the opportunity that's been afforded me. I could start thanking people, but I don't have enough time to thank everybody that I would. But for those who gave me my start, from Jim Barnes, and Chuck Galyon, and Larry Dickerson, who taught me a whole lot about emergency management, to Joel Mashburn, who gave me the opportunity as a director, all the way through Tracy Jackson, and even Ron Smith, who put up with me. I appreciate all of them, but as you said, I was thinking about it the other day, and I couldn't have done it without my family. And I was thinking back during Hugo, and I had to leave, and leave home to go to work, and left town by ourselves. And for them to put up with that was just honorable. And I thank my family, and I thank all the boards and all that we worked with through the years. But most of all, I want to thank my heavenly Father for giving me the opportunity and for protecting this county. And I pray that he will continue to do so. Thanks, Chairman.
In honor of the years of your service, we present you this plaque, David, to tell you that we just love you and respect you so much. Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask John Williams to come up, and Dennis, if you could come up, too. John has been with the Vehicle Services for 21 years and 10 months. He was hired in March 1st, 1994, as a Vehicle Services Supervisor, and his last working day is December 31st. You know, our Vehicle Services Department, and we're going to get to Dennis in a little bit here, but the reason I called Dennis up was to, for him, since he's worked with you on a day-to-day basis, to share some perspectives on your service to the county. And that's a pretty, you know, it's wide open. So, you know, our Vehicle Services Department is responsible for a fleet of vehicles that range from Sheriff's Department cruisers, to EMS wagons, to inspectors' cars, to just, you know, and how many, a dump truck or two, and equipment out at the landfill. I mean, just a whole range of all kinds of different vehicles are in our fleet. And one of the things we looked at recently, the staff did a study, as you ought to, to compare government services versus the options of private enterprise providing those services. You know, where do you get the best bang for the buck? And, you know, things change over time, and vehicles change. Certainly, you know, you have more solid state electronics in a vehicle today than you have motor, it seems like. But what we found, through rather rigorous and objective examination of all of the metrics and variables out there that go into maintaining as large a fleet as we have, is that this small cadre, this small department, has an outsized impact, that it is totally customer-focused, that every vehicle, I think, in the fleet has a character, and our people know the character of that vehicle. It's not something they haven't seen before, and they know even before there's a problem, when they ought to be looking at something. And at the end of the day, the cost-effectiveness of what these public servants bring to the table clearly demonstrated that our best bang for the buck was to continue to march with this type of in-house vehicle maintenance program. So that's a testament, really, to the work that all of you guys do and have done for many years, day-to-day, keeping our fleet going. So, I'd like Dennis to say a few words, since I don't work with the...
Yeah, it's been a pleasure, really. I've got along with John since the day he came, and that's a story I can't tell. Yeah, we've done all the putting on snow tires, we had to get out when nobody else could, pulling in wrecks, seizures, it's, we've, it's been a fun 25 years, actually. But, yeah, it's, John's the best boss I've ever run into. We've never actually had crosswords, and I can't say enough about the man.
You get the words from somebody that works with you day-to-day, I think that's appropriate. I know Ron Smith deals with you on a meetings basis, but working in the bays where the rubber meets the road, you know, that's the kind of testament that really is meaningful, I think. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for your kind words. I've enjoyed my 21 years. Like I said, we started out with 160 or 70 vehicles, and now it's doubled. Dennis has been, if you need a laugh, we can get together and tell some kind of hunting or fishing, or racing, or some kind of lie. So, like I said, I enjoy the kind words, and I appreciate everything the county's done for me, and supported me since day one, and thank you very much for everything.
John, I have a plaque here, and it reads, John Williams, an appreciation for your 21 years of dedicated service to Iredle County, 2015. Thank you very much. And you get to say, because turnabout's fair play, all right? And Mr. Dennis Stewart, been with Vehicle Services for 25 years, and came on as an auto mechanic back in 1990, and December 31st is his last working day. So, John, I'd like you to share some insights about Dennis.
Like I said, since day one, Dennis and I have got along greatly. We were sort of cut off the same mold, basically the same way. Dennis has always been there, take any call, any job. He's been my right-hand man for 21 years. Couldn't have done it without him. Appreciate all the hard work, and the friendship especially. We'll be lifelong friends, buddy. Thank you very much.
An appreciation for your 24 years of dedicated service to Iredle County. Please accept this, and now both of you have more hunting stories to make, all right? Thank you again. Reethia Morrison, and Mr. Steve Messick, the head of our Iredle County Library, is going to come up. Reethia's been with the library for over 30 years, and you've seen it change a lot. And so I'm going to let Steve be able to share a little bit about what you've meant to the Iredle County Public Library and the citizens of this county.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Reethia has been with the library for 30 years. For the past 15 years, she's been our leader in serving children and young people and families in the county. But before that, she's done just about every different job at the library there is. I went back and added up the figures today. Over the past 30 years, somebody's walked through the front door of the library about 7 million times. And I would venture that a very high proportion of those people were served by Reethia. And the most amazing thing is, not only did she serve them, she served them with her wonderful smile. So, on behalf of all of us that have had the privilege to work with you, and on behalf of everybody in Iredle County whose lives you've touched, thank you.
Chairman, I need your thoughts.
Yes, I just want to thank God for being here and working for Iredle County. I came in 85, right out of graduate school. I had a choice between Iredle County and working at Shaw University. And my grandmother said, "Well, come to Iredle County, your sister's here." She was expecting, you know, it'd be a great start for you. And I said, "Iredle County, Raleigh, oh, I don't know." So I came to Iredle County, and I'm glad I did. And if I had to do it all over again, I would be here. And I just want to say thank you, and it has been a pleasure working with the children as well as adults of Iredle County.
On behalf of the County Commission, this plaque says, Reethia Morrison, an appreciation for your 30 years of dedicated service to Iredle County, 2015. Resuming with the agenda, there are no appointments before the Board. We had no public hearings scheduled for this evening, and the administrative matters, item eight, Mr. Smith, if you would please summarize those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a request from the Public Library for approval of Budget Amendment Number 18 for participation in Evergreen International Conference, a request from the Sheriff's Department for Budget Amendment, or approval of Budget Amendment Number 19, to use federal equity-sharing funds to upgrade the firearms simulator, a request from the Sheriff's Department to approve Budget Amendment Number 20, to use federal equity-sharing funds to purchase an educational trailer, a request from the Finance Department to adopt the Mooresville High School Capital Project Fund ordinance, a request from Tax Administration to approve the refunds and releases, and a request for approval of the December 1st, 2015 minutes.
These matters were reviewed at the pre-agenda and agreed to be placed on a consent agenda. Is there any further discussion of these items? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the information we have heard.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman to approve the consent agenda in the administrative matters of Section 8. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements of any vacancies on boards or commissions. We do have appointments, however, for three different boards. The Recreational Advisory Committee, two appointments. Mr. Rob Jackson and Darrell Tilly have volunteered to serve again. We have a motion concerning those appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve Rob Jackson and Darrell Tilly.
Any further discussion? All in favor, motion by Vice Chairman Norman, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The Zoning Board of Adjustment has two appointments. Current alternates, Tim Johnson and Bill Brader, have volunteered to move into the two vacant full-time member positions. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Tim Johnson and Bill Brader to the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, we have the Transportation Advisory Board, which is five appointments. This works closely with our ICAT's service and ensures that it is meeting the needs of the community. The following appointments have been recommended. Susan Wade Gray, Teresa Myers, Rosa Foster, David Crosby, and Fred Fisher. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Susan Wade Gray, Teresa Myers, Rosa Foster, David Crosby, and Fred Fisher by acclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to appoint all five individuals by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion is approved, adopted. Unfinished business, I believe we have inmate reduction report. Ms. Jones.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to give the results of the month of November for our inmate reduction efforts. Those efforts are twofold. One is with the county-funded bailiff position, and the other is with the county-funded ADA position. For the month of November, there were 13 new inmates processed with the bailiff position, and those equated to a savings of 462 days of inmate days. And I have the savings calculated out before you. For the ADA position, a total of 26 new inmates processed with a savings of 486 days. As I always do each month, on the back is your running total of your population versus capacity. The red line is your capacity. I will note typically what we see over the holidays. You will see your numbers in your population decline. People are getting family members out of the jails for the holidays, so you'll see November and probably December decline, and then they'll tick back up in January. That's usually what we see over the holidays. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. And as a note, we've discussed that the reason for monitoring this on a monthly basis was to assist us in evaluating the needs of the future jail expansion, and the Board has already taken action and incorporated these results into that process. And so having a monthly report will no longer be necessary. However, we're going to continue to track all of these items, and this report and the metrics need to be provided to the Judicial Process Improvement Committee that is meeting, that will look at a number of other... Committee that is meeting, that will look at a number of other systemic and process-oriented issues to achieve greater efficiencies in our judicial system. So I want to thank everyone who has worked, particularly Sheriff Campbell and our jail staff, for their hard work to, and willingness to invest an additional deputy to be able to work on issues of getting inmates before the court, as well as our district attorney, Sarah Kirkman, for, you know, appropriately employing the additional district attorney that the county paid for. And to give you a sense, we basically appropriated funds to be able to hire these two additional personnel. The annual cost for the deputy were around $47,865. The annual cost for the assistant district attorney was $78,000. But the days saved, and if you can save a day, you save $70 per inmate in the county jail. And the amount of savings, I don't see a cumulative number, but the total cost of the deputy was exceeded in just two months. The funds were recruit for the assistant district attorney within four months. So we're saving the county dollars by investing in those positions. And we'll continue to look at where it's appropriate to be able to invest additional personnel to produce those kind of results. And I see also back there, Major Connolly, who is head of our jail. And thank you, Bert, for the work that you've done to help us to be able to understand the scope of the challenge and the issues and to take us forward into the next 30 years or so. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. We have no new business to come before the commission. And the public comment period, no one has signed up for any comment. Move on to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things I'd like to bring to your attention. First is, you spoke about the jail. Just to give you an update on where we are. Okay. Lisa and Ben were over at the planning board meeting at 7:00 this evening, and we're in the middle of the entitlement process. And there's a text amendment that was required. And apparently it has passed the planning board. We'll have two readings of the city council before we can legally move forward with building something on the site. Had a meeting this afternoon, or phone conference with the architect at Mosley, and things went really well. Not there yet, but we're getting there on the proposed contract. So I see that we'll probably get some resolution by the end of the week and be coming back to the board sometime soon, maybe first meeting in January. On the public safety building, we're in the process of choosing a technology consultant, which is an extremely important, if not the most important, part of that building. David Salivi is leading a group that has put out RFQs and now are reviewing those qualifications to pick that consultant. Also, the RFQ for the overall design build, I believe, is going to go out by the end of this week. So we're in the process. Things are starting to roll along with that project. Also, I want to mention to you on the winter retreat. Looking at dates, I think we talked about the last meeting, or last weekend, or Friday and Saturday in February, but I don't think that's going to work schedule-wise. And I would like to propose February 12th and 13th, that's a Friday and a Saturday. As you know, typically, we do a full Friday and a half a Saturday, depending on the subject matter. So if you would check your schedules and see if that will work for you, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. If there is nothing further, then we will be moving into a closed session for attorney-client discussions pursuant to... What? We're going to do the new business after the closed session. We're going to come back and do new business. They'd like to just talk about a couple of options. So what we will do is... I thought we were going to lay out, or you were going to go ahead and...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, back to new business then. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what we were going to do procedurally on that. I thought we were going to defer the, a actual vote until January. But I think what Commissioner Robertson is going to do is to share with the general public some of the issues relative to the toll road and Governor McCrory's recent letter staking out a position that the CRTPO is going to have to take.
If I could, if you'll bear with me, the CRTPO is the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And this is the group of counties and cities in the Charlotte area where the state basically kind of consolidates funding requests and projects for light communities. As most of you may know, that the contract to proceed with toll roads was signed last year, okay? And there's been a whole lot of controversy about the toll roads and a lot of movement, and people asking for the state to break the contract with the company. It was awarded the contract, Centra, to build and operate the toll roads. And as a result of some of the controversy, the governor has asked for CRTPO to either vote to break the contract or to continue with it so that at least the political dust can be settled, so to speak. So this board, our representative of the board, will have to make a vote. And the reason that I wanted to bring it up tonight is I think that we need to do some education with the public, because this is not a simple decision of, gee, do I like general-purpose lanes without a toll, or would I like to have a toll road? Well, of course, that is not the issue, okay? If it was that easy, we'd have, we'd have never had toll lanes. So I'd like to explain a little bit about how we got here and what sort of decision that we're actually going to be making. And I'll invoke an author, whose last name was Chesterton, had a thing that he referred to as Chesterton's fence. And he said, the point of the story is, if you were to buy property and you bought some land and there was a fence there, that you shouldn't tear down that fence until you first understood why somebody had put it up there to begin with. So when you, so following that train of thought, before people condemn the fact that toll roads have been an option that has been exercised, I think we need to understand how we got to this point. And I will preface all of this with the fact that I've been a commissioner for 11 years, and I can explain how county departments are funded, I can explain how schools are funded. But I will tell you, the complexity of how roads are funded and prioritized and built, that is not simple. And all I can tell you is it's incredibly complex. And I want to say this, as under Governor McCrory and the Republican-dominated state House and Senate, they did a lot to take the political influence out of the road-building process. But unfortunately for us, they took it out, they took it out, which was the right thing to do. Before we were able to benefit from having a governor from Charlotte and a party in control of Raleigh, they were, we took out political influence before we got I-77 north of Charlotte widened. Everywhere else in the state that you look, the interstates in those highly congested areas have more than four lanes where the traffic is really heavy. We were just, you know, we were standing up when the music stopped. A serious flaw in our current road-building and funding process is that funding formulas were set under the false assumption that all regions had previously been funded evenly. And that was not the case for decades in our Republican-dominated region under Democratic state leadership. The most serious flaw in this thing called, is this thing now called a corridor cap. It's intended to keep all the highway money from flowing primarily to urban areas. It essentially limits how much money can be spent on or near the interstate highways. It also makes it quite difficult to widen the interstate and do other road projects in the same region at the same time. And this corridor cap is an important constraint. So how did we get to this point? When toll roads were first proposed, general-purpose lanes were not proposed as an option. The NC DOT said the only way I-77 was going to get widened was with a toll road. They said we could either get in a 20- to 30-year line for funding general-purpose lanes or accept the option of a toll road. Those were the only two options. NC DOT had over $18 billion in road funding requests and about $2.7 or $2.8 billion in funds to meet those requests. So when they said that five times as many people would get the no answer than would get the yes answer, the money proves that to be true. When this project was proposed many years ago, the NC DOT held numerous public meetings that were announced and advertised. This was not done in secret. I attended most of those meetings, and I will tell you that the attendance was almost always very poor, and opposition was extremely light, while the support for the toll roads, believe it or not, was strong. The toll roads also had the support from the municipalities, all the way from Mooresville to downtown Charlotte, often by some of the same people who now oppose it. I never understood why they thought it was a good idea, other than the fact that NC DOT simply had no other options that could be considered. It's my personal opinion that we got stuck paying for other people's roads with our tax dollars and paying for our own roads with our own toll dollars, because the North Mecklenburg, South Iredell population primarily came from other states who already make wide use of toll roads, and the decision-makers in Raleigh believed that they would not find the concept of toll roads so objectionable. Also, they knew the population in that region to be politically disconnected from North Carolina state issues and almost totally apathetic to local issues. And the contract would be approved without much opposition. And I would say by their success that they were correct. This contract was signed last year. When it was signed, other than the very small group of widened I-77 supporters, there was precious little opposition leading up to that point. And there's a lesson, I think there's a lesson here. In our democratic form of government, it's essential that the electorate be informed. That means there's an obligation by the voters to learn the issues and elect representatives based upon how their views compared to yours. Most voters in our region do not get a local newspaper. They don't watch the local news. They don't attend informational meetings. They don't go to meet the candidate forums. They don't take the time to get engaged until they're alarmed. Unfortunately, in this case, the alarm went off after the house burnt down. This is not meant to be a criticism personally, but rather a general observation about how we came to have such a bad contract, and in fact, what I consider now to be a terrible contract. In defense of the local politicians and officials who did support the toll roads, just keep in mind that the North Carolina Department of Transportation only presented two options: the toll roads or widening the interstate with general-purpose lanes that would not begin until somewhere around 2030 to 2035. When the road widening project was first discussed 10 years ago, no federal monies were considered for any general lane road widening projects anywhere. They would only consider HOV lanes and toll roads. So general-purpose lane projects had no matching federal funding sources, therefore a 0% chance of getting approved. You know, that cannot be lost in this debate. When this started, there was no money for general-purpose lanes. The toll road project also funds a lot of other associated road projects along the North Meck, I-77 corridor. And, you know, I'm a little resentful, because I think North Mecklenburg is going to get a lot of road projects funded basically from Iredell commuters. But there was, it's no surprise that at the time, before this contract was signed, all of those towns along that North Mecklenburg corridor all supported the toll roads. Now, this stretch of I-77 crosses the lake twice. And although Lake Norman is a man-made lake, the cost of environmental impact studies and the additional cost to comply with excessive environmental regulations during any construction and road construction make this a very expensive addition to the widening project. That's another reason why this, why you saw 77 South get widened, 85 north and south of Charlotte get widened. This road didn't get widened because they were avoid, the environmental cost of dealing with that causeway over the lake is huge. And again, all I can say is elections have consequences. Our nation elected people that advocated to put all these obstacles to road construction and using the environment as an excuse. And unfortunately, this is what it looks like when it gets implemented. The CRTPO is the planning body, and it's made up of representatives from this region who get to vote proportionally. So Iredell is a small minority of this voting board. The city of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County control 46% of the votes on this board. That's two people in that room control 46% of the votes. So they just need one or two little tiny towns, Weddington, you know, try, they just need two towns somewhere to vote with them, and they have a majority to do whatever it is that they want to do. So when you think about it, in Iredell County, our road projects have a 0% chance of getting any funds without the support of both Charlotte and the Mecklenburg County representatives on the CRTPO. So everyone needs to know that the impact of being offensive, for us to be rude, ugly, nasty in this environment, could have negative consequences to Iredell County commuters for a very, very long time. The state, the state sweetened the pot for toll roads, and they had a fund of what they called bonus money, which is an appropriation of $145 million that they allocated to the CRTPO region if we supported the toll road concept. If we break the contract, if we vote no, CRTPO will have to pay what they estimate to be around, we've been told about $100 million in penalties to the toll road company that won the contract, and we will lose the $145 million of bonus money. So if you add the two together, that's a quarter of a billion dollars that, of money that will leave our region if we break this contract. It's a poison pill, and I think it's a poison pill by design. If the, if the $100 million that they say has to be paid to Centra, what we don't know is, does that come out of our CRTPO road money? Or will they say no, because it's highway dollars and the gas tax paid for some of it? That state highway funds can't be used to pay the $100 million, but... That state highway funds can't be used to pay the $100 million, but the government bodies in CRTPO would have to pay it. So does that mean that Iredale County Board of Commissioners, City Estates, Old Town of Moores, Old Town of Troutman, would we have to cough up our portion of that penalty out of our general funds? That's not, I don't know the answer to that, but that's something that we have to at least consider. So this isn't a simple decision of voting, gee, I like toll roads or I don't like toll roads, because if we break the contract, there are some huge financial consequences to be dealt with. Personally, I think that our only hope is that the widened I-77 group, they have a lawsuit trying to get the contract nullified. If that lawsuit prevails and the contract is voided by the courts, not by CRTPO, let's hope that the lawsuit wins so that we won't be guaranteed traffic jams for the next 50 years. But if the lawsuit prevails, we shouldn't have to pay the $100 million penalty. We will still lose the $145 million in bonus money, and the corridor cap will still be there, and it will be a huge obstacle that can only be overcome with support from legislation in Raleigh. And we have to think about this for a minute. What are the chances that representatives from across the state will vote to change a formula that would mean less money for their region so that we could get more money for our region? Personally, I think if that does happen, we could try to attempt to widen I-77 a few miles at a time, just go from exit to exit. That's usually about three miles at a time, and it would take decades, but it could be done. But the point that I'm trying to make tonight, and as an effort to educate the public, is there are no easy answers. There are very expensive and very, there are a lot of negative options or negative consequences to the two options that lie before us. But the main point that I want to leave everybody with tonight is that this is not a simple vote on, do we get to have general purpose lanes or are we going to make ourselves have toll lanes? It is not that simple. If we vote to break the contract, this could be a quarter of a billion dollar decision that will affect our region, and it could in fact impact our budgets as well if somehow we're held liable for the financial consequences of breaking the contract. I just wanted to make you aware of it, and we'll talk about this more before our next CRTPO meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Robertson. Any comments from board members? I want to thank Commissioner Robertson for his service with the CRTPO and for sharing his insights on a very complicated and complex issue. I think everyone knows that after signing the contract, there were several extensions to the contract granted by the state to allow Centra to modify their proposals or to validate some issues. And prior to the final extension, this board did go on record asking the state and the governor to delay and to revisit the terms of this contract, which upon a full reading seemed outlandish in many respects and which seemed to be, given the change of circumstances, probably inappropriate. Not to say that at the time the contract was drafted, that that may have appeared to be the only option, with Centra being the only potential contractor left standing, and they had to dance to their tune. But that request was not heated. It is now a contract, and now we have to look at the very real consequences in a monetary sense of, for our own future funding of roads in Iredale County, and how our vote may impact that, even though in all likelihood it would be in a minority and not change the result, but it could change the atmospherics on the CRTPO, which would be to our detriment. So we will be discussing that. I'm sure we will hear from the public, and we invite your comments and input. And at some point, this will be, as I said, as Commissioner Robertson said, ultimately up to the courts to determine whether this contract withstands scrutiny. Okay, at this time, we will go into a closed session for attorney-client discussions pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A.3. And when we return, we'll pick up with item eight, new business.
All right. Okay, we'll come back into open session, having had discussed some issues in closed session, attorney-client matters. We do have a motion concerning modification of the contract to purchase Davis, Old Davis Hospital property in conjunction with the City of Statesville and Mitchell College.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we enter into an agreement with Mitchell Community College and the City of Statesville to loan $31,000 towards the demolition of the Old Davis Hospital.
A motion has been made. Any further discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Johnson voting negative. Is there any further business to be conducted? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.